So we're good to go?
Good to go.
Like to call this meeting of the Windsocket City Council to order for Monday, April 6, 2020. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yeah.
Councilman Canoya?
Here.
Councilman Kiffes? Did you hear anything? Councilwoman Sierra?
Here.
Councilman Susie?
Here.
Councilman Ward?
Here.
President Gendron?
Here. We do have a quorum. If we could proceed with the prayer and the pledge, Madam Clerk.
God our Father, we ask that you send your blessing upon this city and upon this council. Guide us in our efforts, increase our motivation, and strengthen our resolve to build a better community and ensure a brighter future for the city of Windsocket. This we ask in your name. Amen.
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 I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under God, with liberty, justice, and all.
Well, that might be something we amend next meeting.
Yeah. I even brought my little flag, but I guess you couldn't see it.
I saw it.
Oh, did you?
I saw it, yeah.
I have one on the other side of the basement, so it worked out for me.
Okay.
So, to the public that's listening for the first time, I would just like to let everyone know that we are under a somewhat relaxed OMA ruling or regulation, which is allowing us to have these electronic virtual meetings. One of the caveat is that everything, can you hear me, Mike? Okay, everything that we are supposed to do during these meetings needs to be essential and purposeful for the continued operation of government. And so some of the agenda has been amended for such things as good and welfare, citizens' good and welfare. And those things will not be included in this virtual type of meeting that we will be undertaking. So from this point on, I'm going to ask everyone, please mute your phones, your TVs, I mean your computers, and allow the council to proceed meeting uninterrupted, and know that you are calculated and included in the meeting as we perform. So the first item on the agenda is approval on the agenda for the Board of Licensed Commissioners.
20 LC-
Sorry.
20 LC-12, application of licenses and renewal of licenses.
Council President.
Council Vice President Brien.
I make a motion that we approve Class F liquor with entertainment under renewals, automobile junkyard, bowling alley, holiday license, massage therapy, quarterly entertainment, secondhand dealer auto, secondhand dealer merchandise center, and tobacco license.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Brien, seconded by Councilwoman Sierra, and I believe Councilman Kiffes.
Yes.
Okay. Any comments on 20 LC-12? Hearing none. All those in favor? Uh, we're going to do a roll call for every vote. So Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kiffes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
I missed some of the votes.
President Gendron?
Yes. And I believe that is a seven to zero vote?
Yes.
So 20 LC-12 is approved seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is approval and correction of the minutes from the meetings held March 2nd and the special meeting held April 1st.
Council President.
Council Vice President Brien.
Unless there are no additions, corrections, or deletions, I move that we approve as presented the minutes of the regular meeting held March 2nd and the special meeting held April 1st.
Motion made by Brien, seconded by Councilman Ward, I believe.
No, that was when someone else.
It was me.
It was Susie.
Councilman Susie.
Yeah.
Any items to be, let's do this. When you make the motion, if you could please say your name and the motion, so that I can know, I want to get the motions and seconds right. So motion made by Councilman Brien, seconded by Councilman Susie. Are there any items, corrections, deletions from the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kiffes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and the minutes are approved seven to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda.
I'll make a question. David Susie?
Motion made by Councilman Susie.
Seconded by Ward.
By Councilman Ward. Any items to be taken up independent or received as presented? All those in favor? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kiffes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and the consent agenda is approved as presented, seven to zero. New ordinance is Madam Clerk.
2000-03, authorizing the fire chief of the city of Windsocket to purchase a 2020 Ford F-50 Emergency Medical Services Rescue Vehicle. Motion to approve, Sierra.
Motion made by Councilwoman Sierra, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Canoya.
Just want to make sure the amendment that we passed back in March remains. That's going to be charged to the CDBG funds.
So 2000-03 is before us as amended at the monitored meeting. Is that still the motion of Councilwoman Sierra and Councilman Ward?
That is what's noted on the agenda as amended.
Very good. Any other comments on the motion as amended? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kiffes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 2000-03 is approved, first passage, seven to zero.
2000-05, amend the code of ordinances, city of Windsocket, Rhode Island, entitled Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter 3, Section 3.5(c). Motion to approve, Sierra.
Motion made by Councilwoman Sierra, seconded by Councilman Ward, I believe.
Yes.
Was that correct?
Correct.
And Brien.
And Brien, thank you. Any comments or motions on the, comments on the- Council President? Councilman Kiffes?
So I'm opposed to this. Obviously, especially right now during the pandemic, businesses in our city are struggling, and I see this as very anti-business. I think it violates due process, honestly, and especially, you know, for businesses who have worked hard to get their liquor licenses. I think it gives the board way too much power. And especially right at a time right now where these meetings are more difficult to attend, and we don't actually have public good and welfare, where people could comment on this. I think that I will not be supporting this tonight.
Okay. Are there any other comments on 2000-05? Yeah. No other comments. Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kiffes?
No.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 2000-05 is approved, first passage, six to one.
2000-06, transferring funds from City Capital Fund to Inspection Division.
Motion to approve, Jim.
Second, Alex.
Canoya, seconded by-
Kiffes.
Kiffes.
Councilman Kiffes. Comments? Okay, this is for the purchase of three vehicles for the Inspection Division, and this will be transferring funds for that purchase. Uh, any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kiffes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 2000-06 is approved, seven to zero.
2000-08, declaration of emergency.
If we could, I believe we can take up 2000-08, 09, and 10 together? Or would you like to take-
Hello.
I would like to take at least 2009 separately.
Okay, let's just do the three separate then. Madam Clerk, you read 2000-08. So on 2000-08, we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion.
Oh, sorry, Sierra.
Councilwoman Sierra, seconded by-
Kiffes.
Councilman Kiffes. Comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kiffes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 2000-08 is approved, seven to zero. Again, and this is an affirmation of a emergency ordinance that was passed prior to this meeting.
2000-09, declaration of emergency.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilman Brien.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ward and Councilwoman Sierra. Comments?
Council President.
Councilman Kiffes?
So I would like to offer an amendment, and I will read that. So under section, both section two and three, strike the last period.
Let me just, before we do, Councilman, I just want to check, is Solicitor D. Simone still on with us?
He does appear to be active still.
Counsel-
Remind him.
Okay.
He seems to be there and not muted. Sorry.
He's there, but he doesn't seem to be-
There.
... dissipating. Okay, let's do this.
Let's be shy.
Let's hear what you were going to say for the amendment then, Councilman Kiffes. I would like to get, because I don't know if we can amend this because it was already an emergency ordinance, but go ahead with that, and we'll hopefully connect with the solicitor. I'm going to try texting him while you're giving your amendment.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to amend it by, in both section two and three, striking the final period and replacing it with, in both cases, comma, " applicable to any tangible or real estate property wherein, for each and every unit within the property, no eviction has occurred between 4:47 p.m. on March 9, 2020," parentheses, "Governor Raimondo's declaration of a state of emergency, the first by any executive who has jurisdiction over Windsocket," close parentheses, "and the time of payment of tax liability originally due on April 15, 2020, and either no eviction has been initiated between 4:47 p.m. on March 9, 2020, and the time of payment of tax liability originally due on April 15, 2020, or such eviction has been initiated after 4:47 p.m. on March 9, 2020, but revoked without having occurred by the time of payment of tax liability originally due on April 15, 2020."
That is a motion made by Councilman Kiffes. Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second made by Councilman Susie. On the amendment, comments?
Council President.
Councilman Kiffes?
Uh, so yeah, so I made this amendment because I had originally suggested this via email, and obviously, this is all very confusing right now with figuring these things out. So the reason that I'm amending it this way is because I believe very strongly that in a city with so many renters, it's important to try to create some disincentive to perform or initiate evictions during this time, obviously, where a lot of people have lost their source of income and are otherwise might be housing insecure. So while we don't have the ability to, while we don't have the ability to directly affect evictions, I think that this is a good, this is a good addition to this ordinance.
Okay. Any other comments?
Council President.
Councilman Brien?
I think the only issue I have with the amendment is the fact that it's actually impossible, and if the solicitor is on right now, or there are any other attorneys on the line right, or the meeting right now, it's impossible to initiate an eviction in any way, shape, or form right now. The courts have been closed. In fact, Washington County is closed, Newport is closed, and now Kent County is closed. Providence is only open for emergencies, and that's only for in the event that there is, that there are matters involving liberty. That is to say jail- jail case.
Yeah, and I would agree with that.
And so it's actually impossible, and I understand, you know, the concern. However, I feel like it's unnecessary only to the extent you couldn't do an eviction today if you desperately wanted to, and you haven't been able to do one. I want to go, if the solicitor's on, John, we haven't, the courts haven't been open for at least two, almost three weeks now, and they're probably not going to be open through the month of April. I wouldn't be surprised if the courts are commensurate with the schools, because there's no way you can pack the, if Providence is the only building that's open, and Providence is the most populated building, that building's not going to be open in the month of April. So you can't even do an eviction if you want one. So I think that there's a protection in place simply by the governor's executive order saying that the courthouse and the chief judge's executive order saying that the courts are closed. You can't have an eviction if you want one. So people are protected by the fact of the executive order put on by Chief Justice Sotell anyway. That's, so I, I'm not going to approve the amendment, because I don't think the amendment is needed, because you can't have evictions now anyway.
Okay, I would like to, the solicitor is on now. So if we could go to the solicitor, his opinion, first of all, if we can even amend an emergency ordinance that was passed, and this is just the affirmation, so solicitor.
Well, number one, I think you could amend it because it's before us. But number two, I agree with John, the courts are closed, only Providence is open. And practically speaking, you couldn't get an eviction at this point in time, so.
Council President.
Were you able to hear me?
Yes. It was, I didn't hear it all. It broke up a little bit for me, but if everyone else heard it. You heard it. Okay. John, are you all set?
I think right now I am, yeah.
Okay. So what, just, what was your short answer? Can we amend an emergency ordinance that has already been passed?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Kiffes, or who, anyone else to speak for the first time?
Council President.
Councilman Ward?
Thank you. I appreciate the sentiment and the intent of the amendment. However, I have to be in agreement with Councilman Brien. I, I don't understand what possible value there is to doing something that prevents or requires the prevention of something impossible in any case. The ordinance calls for the delay of any interest or penalty associated with payment of taxes. None of the landlords can undertake eviction actions at this time, so they would all be eligible for this extension. And so in my opinion, the ordinance is satisfactory on its face in light of all of the other things, including the impact of the 12 separate executive orders and revisions thereof that have been issued by the governor and the order of the court to stay closed. Though these are, express a good sentiment and the intent to protect those tenants who are struggling, I believe with all of the actions being taken by the state and by the courts, those people who are tenants and who may be under normal circumstances at risk are protected by what is going on, and so I find, in my opinion, the amendment is unnecessary. The ordinance is adequate as it stands. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Kiffes?
Uh, so I mean, the, um, the, the amendment also includes the actual performance of an eviction, maybe one that had been initiated and processed by the courts prior to the state of emergency, but having occurred during the state of emergency. And also, so I, this is a question, can I address a question, Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Or the solicitor?
Do it here.
Yeah, so I, I mean, is, it is possible to pull initial papers for an eviction, but it doesn't get processed by the courts until after they reopen, isn't that correct?
I would say so.
Okay, so, I mean, so this amendment is not meaningless, like that's, I mean, I just like, it, there are situations where it would apply. So I will certainly be continuing to offer this amendment.
Okay. Any other comments?
Council President for the second time.
Brien?
Thank you. I would say that only and briefly, the governor specifically in her executive order and in the executive order by Chief Judge Sotell stated that evictions that were granted prior to the governor's executive order can in fact go forward, because those matters were in the pipeline prior to this happening. So if you were, if a landlord was granted an eviction prior to this crisis, then that eviction should hold, and that's, that's by order of the governor and the chief judge. Number two, a eviction is not effectuated in any way, shape, or form until such time is that it's accepted by the court, and then there is service placed upon a tenant by a state constable. None of those people are doing that right now. None of this action is happening. Without service, you cannot have an eviction proceeding, and therefore, since service is not being granted right now, eviction. So there's, it's, we're basically trying to implement something that judicially cannot happen.
Council President.
Uh, Solicitor D. Simone?
Yes, if I may, I agree with John. I mean, practically speaking, the courts, their calendars are all suspended. There's only business emergency matters that could possibly be put on. Even if someone was evicted, the sheriffs aren't going out and executing the eviction. So from a practical and legal point of view, really, the amendment is moot.
Okay. Any other comments on the amendment?
Council President.
Hearing none.
Council President.
Alex.
Councilman Kiffes?
Again, so to Councilman Brien's point, we are not the governor, and so while the governor may have stated in her executive order that evictions could go through, we can still take a higher moral stance as a city and say that we're not going to reward landlords who performed an eviction during a crisis, that, and made somebody homeless during a crisis that had, since that eviction had gone through prior. So this, again, for the third time now, this amendment is actually not meaningless. And also, the other part of it having to do with the initiation, it's, it's not under our control whether, whether the states of emergency are a lift, are, excuse me. What, there are elements of the states of emergency, and the last one that would be lifted that are out of our control, you know, whether that is the state or federal state of emergency. And so there's a scenario where the rest of that amendment would be applicable if, if the state reopens and the courts begin processing eviction claims, but there is still a state of emergency implemented in the city of Windsocket or on the federal level. This amendment would apply. So again, for the third time, I continue to offer my amendment.
Okay. Any other comments?
Council President?
Councilman Canoya?
Yeah. I'm not going to, I don't support this amendment. I don't know if there are people out there that have ever owned property and rented property to people, but evicting someone is not a pleasant experience. People don't do it willy-nilly. It's costly, it's a headache. Most landlords would rather work something out with their tenants, number one. Number two, I don't even know how we would administer this. This would be an administrative nightmare on the city side, trying to make these determinations. And number three, there's already a ton of structure and protections around, excuse me, evictions. You actually have to go to court and get a court, a court order. So it's not like, you know, this stuff is just happening without a ton of structure around it already. So I won't be supporting this.
Any other comments? On the amendment, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
No.
Councilman Canoya?
No.
Councilman Kiffes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
No.
Councilman Susie?
No.
Councilman Ward?
No.
President Gendron?
No, and the amendment fails six to one. On the main motion of 2000-09, are there any comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kiffes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 2000-09 is approved, seven to zero.
2010, supplemental declaration of emergency.
Motion to approve, Kiffes.
Motion made by-
Ward.
Kiffes, seconded by Councilman Ward. Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kiffes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 2010 is approved, seven to zero.
2011, granting a petition for a new joint poll for National Grid and Verizon on Hamlet Avenue. Motion to approve, Sierra.
Motion made by Councilwoman Sierra.
Second, Ward.
Seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kiffes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 2011 is approved, first passage, seven to zero.
2012, ordinance issuing waiver of composting facility fee.
Motion to approve, Brien.
Second, Ward.
Second, Sierra.
Motion made by Councilman Brien, seconded by Councilwoman Sierra and Councilman Ward. Comments? Hearing none. Roll call-
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kiffes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 2012 is approved, seven to zero, first passage.
2013, transferring funds from City Capital Fund to Public Service Division.
Motion approved, Canoya.
Second, Ward.
Motion made by Councilman Canoya, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Canoya?
I'd like to offer an amendment, and I would like to change. I'd like to change the, from the Capital Fund, I'm going to change it to the Highway Department to account 1-010-063-53-53352, ice controls.
So a motion made by Councilman Canoya.
Second on the amendment, Ward.
Seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments on the amendment? Hearing none, roll, Madam Clerk.
Council President.
Councilman Kithis.
I just want to ask Councilman Canoya what the reasoning was for that.
Councilman Canoya?
Yep. Take it out of ice controls, where we have, right now, we have excess funds because we didn't have as much snow this winter, and we'd leave the restricted capital account as is for now.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
I just want to say, I think, to give that some context, too, and I had had a conversation with Councilman Canoya about this, a serious concern has to be, paid close attention to with the fact that the extreme amount of revenue the state is losing currently, they will clearly have to come up with some sort of supplemental budgetary scheme to take care of paying the bill for the interest on the line of credit they're going through and the reduced receipts, as well as the development of next year's budget, which will probably put a strain on appropriations from the state coming to the local communities, and that may put a strain on our budget. So, we need to reserve as much special funds like our capital funds in case we need them for any capital projects next year. So, I think it's appropriate, we try to squeeze everything we can out of our existing operating budget, and look forward to having to deal with some challenges next year. Thank you.
That's a very good point, Councilman Ward. Any other comments? Hearing none, on the amendment, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kithis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes. And 2013 is before us as amended, on the main motion as amended. Any comments?
Hearing none, roll.
One question.
Who is that, please?
Steve D'Agostino.
Oh, Director D'Agostino, yes.
Does this take effect upon passage?
It would be a transfer, so, yes.
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 Yeah. Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Assuming that the mayor signs it.
Okay. Well, somebody better sign it.
On the main motion as amended, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kithis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes. And 2013 is approved seven to zero as amended.
Council President.
Councilman Brien?
Thank you. I just wanted to go back to 2012 just for a moment, only to the extent because of what Director D'Agostino just said, because it is an emergency ordinance, you said that was first passage, and I believe that that ordinance will take effect upon this passage. It doesn't require a second, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, emergency ordinances don't require a second, but I don't know if, Solicitor, I know you're muted right now, but Solicitor, can you speak to if 2012 is considered an emergency ordinance?
2012, I don't think that is an emergency. We didn't draft it as an emergency ordinance, so.
Well, the only reason why I say that is because of one of, in the charter, one of the things it states is that it has to state that there is the existence of an emergency. Section 1 states the existence of that emergency. So, therefore, because the emergency is stated within the legislation and is, you know, spoken in the whereas clauses, it was my understanding that that would, that would take effect upon passage.
Well, there is an emergency pending. We've already had a declaration of emergency which exists. But as you know, John, the whereas clauses don't have any legal significance.
No, but Section 1 states, the City of One Socket declares the existence of an emergency. So, I, it was my understanding, then, in keeping with the charter, the fact that we're stating that we're declaring an emergency within the ordinance itself, the language of the ordinance, that would negate the need for a second passage.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I agree with that. So, I would make a legal ruling that it is considered an emergency ordinance.
Okay, then, let the record reflect, Madam Clerk, that 2012 is an emergency ordinance and will go into effect with a single passage.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you.
Solicitor Deesem.
Moving on to new res.
20R27, authorizing the cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve, Ward.
Motion made by Councilman Ward.
Second.
Yeah.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra. Comments?
Council President.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, just for the public's interest, this is an abatement of miscellaneous taxes totaling $3,340.18.
Thank you, Councilman Ward. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kithis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes. And 20R27 is approved seven to zero.
20R36, authorizing the cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve, Kithis.
Motion made by Councilman Kithis.
Second for purpose of discussion by Ward.
Seconded by Councilman Ward. Before we get into a discussion, I do want to let everyone know I was contacted by the Finance Director, and she indicated that the amount which is listed in the abatement is incorrect. If we move forward with this, we will need an amendment to correct the incorrect amount. The correct amount should be $5,196.92, not the $5,376, which the resolution shows. So, if we could have a motion to amend the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilman Ward.
I'll second.
Second.
This is to amend the 20R36. Any comments on the amendment?
Council President?
Councilman Brien?
On both the amendment and the underlying resolution, under an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself from this particular resolution.
Let the record reflect that Councilman Brien has recused himself from 20R36. Any other comments? On the, I mean, on the amendment, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kithis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes. And 20R36 is amended on a six to zero vote. On the main motion as amended, do we have any comments?
Council President.
Councilman Ward?
Council President, I'm going to be supporting this abatement for a couple of reasons, though the tax, acting city tax assessor has indicated objection to this abatement. I should point out to the members that it has been the assessor's practice in denying an appeal that she do it by not offering any denial in writing or any explanation of denial, because statutorily, simply not responding constitutes a denial and leaves it up to the taxpayer to understand their rights and file an appeal with the Board of Assessment Review, which in this case, and in the following 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 separate resolutions, you will find that that is the case here. Within her objection, she references rules and regulations of the board, and having spoken with the chairman of that board, he has absolutely no idea what those rules and regulations are, has not been able to find anybody who can provide them to him, has never seen them. And in addition, the assessor not only did not communicate with the taxpayer about the denial, but did not communicate with the board about the denial, and in fact, was not present at the meeting where this abatement was approved in a discussion between the taxpayer and the board members. And so, for that reason, I do not, cannot support her objection and will be supporting this abatement for this taxpayer. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on 20R36 as amended?
Council President?
Councilman Canoya?
Yeah, just to add to what Councilman Ward said, I agree with him, and it's, we're gonna see this, I think, three or four, five more times as we have a number of abatements here. I have a hard time, although I appreciate the tax assessor, including a memo with these abatements, advising us or suggesting that we should not approve these, and she gives some reasons. The problem I have with this is, as Councilman Ward said, number one, she did not attend the Board of Assessment Review meeting, when this really should have been discussed, and number two, by giving us this information, the taxpayers are not here, they're not part of this process to rebut anything she's saying. Again, the process for this discussion and this debate was in front of the Board of Assessment Review, where the taxpayer would have made their case, and then the city slash tax assessor would have made her case, they could have hashed it out. Coming in at this late hour and giving this to the council does not facilitate the taxpayer to have any ability to rebut this. So, I will be supporting this and likely the others as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
This is Chris Chamberlain.
Yes.
Can you?
Yes.
I just want to say, I did inquire with the leaf about the regulations, and she does have them, and she will be forwarding them to me, and I will, I just wanted to clarify that she says there are rules and regulations on file.
Okay. Councilman, you all set?
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
If there are rules and regulations, one of the questions I posed in an email to the Finance Director and, I guess, to prove her to the acting tax assessor was, were those rules and regulations ever provided to each new member of the board as they took their position as a member of the Board of Assessment Review? And apparently, from my conversation with the current chairman, no such effort was ever made to provide them with rules. And based upon some of the rules she cites, especially in this instance, citing a rule that requires the applicant to provide certain documentation related to income and expenses, in fact, that income and expense data should be provided to the assessor, and that would have been part of her communication of denial to the taxpayer if she made any effort at all to communicate with the taxpayer. And so, the information would have been something provided by the assessor to the board, had that been received. But in any case, related to the rules, the board members have no knowledge of them. So, clearly, the assessor did not have a close enough relationship with the Board of Assessment Review to make sure that they were provided those rules. Secondly, there are, there are other rules mentioned here later, along with this rule, that seem to be contradictory to the nature of how the Board of Assessment Review is to function as it is defined in the charter. And so, I would say that if those rules are in fact made available, they should be reviewed by the Solicitor's Office to make sure that they're in compliance with the, the actual intention of the language in the charter related to how the Board of Assessment Review should conduct itself. And I think that would provide, go a long way in the future towards availing or relieving us of the kinds of problems we're dealing with here now, communication and rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will just leave with the one last comment, that I too agree that the time to make this argument should have been at the Board of Assessment Review. I was disappointed when I met with the Finance Director and the Solicitor, and we were informed that the acting tax assessor, and at one point, the tax assessor had not gone to make these arguments at the meeting. So, I will be supporting these next resolutions for the abatement. And with that being said, roll call, Madam Clerk, on 20R36 as amended.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kithis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes. And 20R36 is approved seven to zero as amended.
20R37, authorizing the cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve, Ward.
Second.
Sierra.
A motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilwoman Sierra and Councilman Kithis. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
I will just reiterate, this recommendation by the Board of Assessment Review came at the meeting of January 30th of 2020, where no evidence was appeared in the minutes to have been presented by the assessor, and the assessor was not present to express her objection. And so, I would gather, knowing that it was on an agenda for the board, had she have had an objection, she should have placed it before the board prior to their meeting or attended the meeting. And not having done so, I think she makes the point again that, in fact, the abatement is appropriate under the circumstances for her failure to act in an appropriate way. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brien?
Yes.
Councilman Canoya?
Yes.
Councilman Kithis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes. And 20R37 is approved zero. And Madam Clerk, before we move on to the next resolution, I think I need to correct the stated results of the vote of 20R36 as amended, because I believe that's the one Councilman Brien had recused himself. So, the correct vote should have actually been six to zero, not seven to one, as I stated.
That's okay. I noted six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah.
20R38, authorizing the cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve, Ward.
Made by Councilman Ward.
Second, Sierra.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
Simply say that this is the exact same circumstance and all of the issues raised by the assessor after the fact exist in the case of this property. And so, without repeating my issues associated with Resolution 36, I'll simply say that I'll be supporting this abatement.
Thank you, Councilman Ward. Any other comments?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman, Councilman Susie?
Yes. Yeah, I'm going along with these things. I'm just wondering, are we, because, are we, what are we doing? Are we punishing the assessor for maybe doing her job a little bit late, but are we still saying that her arguments have no value, that we're giving away $40,000 in this case because we're upset that she wasn't out of eating? Is that what we're saying?
It's certainly not what I'm saying, Councilman Susie. I would simply say that the due process that is provided to anyone who is put in this position that goes to the Board of Assessment Review and disputes their assessment, that is like a court of law, and they're there to argue their case. They were there. We didn't give them the opportunity to hear what our argument was. So, in my mind, it's not something to punish the solicitor, I mean, the assessor, but to simply say that the public was not given the ability to know what this argument would be, and for us to come in at the 11th hour and simply deny the abatement is unfair. It would be like going to court, arguing your case, the defendant doesn't show up, and then you get a letter in the mail that says, "By the way, we're denying even though you had won the court case." But I'll let Councilman Ward give him.
I'm locked. I can't hear anything.
If I may, Councilman Susie, in response to that, I'm looking at the minutes of the meeting of January 30th that are referenced as part of this abatement, and it, you know, to say that it's simply giving away $40,000, I don't think is really adequately describes what happened, because the assessment, at least in terms of how the minutes read, the assessment on the property doubled in one cycle of revaluation, and the bill represented over $50,000 tax increase. The actual abatement is a compromise and still represents a 20% increase in value over the prior value that was placed on a fatality according to the minutes that have been filed for the board meeting that night. So, it's not necessarily just simply giving away money, but they made a case for comparability with other properties of similar. with other properties of similar size and nature, and the board listened to it and heard and evaluated against how they were assessed, the impact on their value, and made a decision to find a midpoint that they could live with, that they felt was appropriate under the circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brian?
Yes.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilman Kithis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 20R38 is approved seven to zero.
20R39, authorizing the cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve, Ward.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Canoia, I believe?
Yes. Yep, Canoia, yep.
Comments?
Council President.
Councilman Ward?
This one too has to do with the meeting of January 30th of 20, and the assessor again objects, without having been present at the meeting or provided any communication to the taxpayer or the board related to the objection, and what I find particularly interesting about this one is that in, in an email, there was reference made to how this property, how this property would have been required to submit revenue and expenses, income and expenses from the property, which would imply that it was being valued on what is referred to as a, an income base, or, and in fact, the property has always been valued simply on a cost basis, or in revaluation cycles on a comparability basis. However, this particular one indicates that the building was incorrectly assessed in 2017, a period of time, I believe our assessor was our full-time tax assessor. That being the case, what is clear is that the value went from that $230,900 to $602,100, slightly less than, but almost triple the value previously, and it was based on the simple, some, single transaction of a sale. I don't know whether or not that is exactly appropriate to make that mid-course correction, and certainly, I don't know how the income and expense methodology would be appropriate when the history of the property has been that it's always been valued in the $230,000 range, and only jumped up in that last full evaluation. I, again, with no communication and referencing to rules that nobody seems to have a copy of, except the assessor, and the fact that she asserts now that she incorrectly assessed it in 2017, I'm finding that the argument is weak, and I'm going to support the abatement in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brian?
Yes.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilman Kithis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 20R39 is approved seven to zero.
20R40, authorizing the cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve, Kithis.
Second, Ward.
Kithis seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments?
Council President.
Councilman Ward?
This one's even a little more egregious, because in this case, the properties that are listed here, this was handled at a June 27th, 2019 meeting where the recommendation was made for the abatements, and this is just reaching us now. However, in this instance, and it's my understanding, again, there was no communication to the taxpayer about why they were being denied, and they had to appeal, and they did, to the Board of Assessment Review, but in fact, in this one, the minutes reflect no comments or objections raised by the assessor, who at the time was our full-time employee, and who was in attendance at the meeting where these abatements were approved. And so, not having written or raised any objection to now come at us in 2020, listing out objections as to these abatements, I really can't support those objections, because it's a bit much, and I think the, in this case, the taxpayer was represented by a reputable firm that brought arguments before the board, and again, as I said, the assessor was there. The representative for the taxpayer was William Coyle, and yet, there is nothing to indicate in the minutes that the assessor made any statements or objected in any way at that time, and so I find it rather interesting that she would raise objection now, and that being the case, I'm going to support these abatements.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brian?
Yes.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilman Kithis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 20R40 is approved seven to zero.
20R41, authorizing the cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve, Ward.
Second.
Second, Sierra.
Most, I, I believe, I heard the second, who was the first? Who made the motion?
Ward.
Ward. Councilman Ward, motion seconded by Councilwoman Sierra.
Council President.
Ward and Sierra. Councilman Ward?
Again, this is the same issue as the last one, this was held, this was decided by the board and recommended at the June 27th, 2019 meeting for these properties and taxpayers and these accounts. The Tax Assessor was in attendance, the record, the minutes reflect no objection raised by, by the Tax Assessor at that time, as a matter of fact, the rules that the assessor refers to under the rules and regulations in her memo were not even presented to the board at that time for their consideration as part of her objection, and so, I find her objection to be weak at best, and therefore, I'll be supporting these abatements.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brian?
Yes.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilman Kithis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
President Gendron? Yes, and 20R41 is approved seven to zero.
20R42, authorizing the cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve, Ward.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by, I believe, Councilman Kithis?
Brian.
Or Councilman Brian? Councilman Brian. Comments?
Council President.
Councilman Ward?
I just want to point out that this resolution is an abatement of taxes totaling $2,172.62.
Thank you. Ward, any other comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brian?
Yes.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilman Kithis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 20R42 is approved seven to zero.
Council President.
Before you say that, Councilman Ward, I would just like to thank everybody for their participation in this meeting. I don't know about the rest of you, but it was quite stressful because of some little technical glitches, but we got it done, and we are keeping essential business going, and thank you for your participation. And Councilman Ward?
Council President, this meeting having zoomed by so quickly, I would move that we adjourn.
Motion, Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Canoia, to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose, the ayes have it, we are adjourned at 8:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Dan.
Thank you, thank you.
Good job, Madam Clerk.
Everybody.
Yep, thank you, be safe. Be safe.
Great job, Mike O'Connell.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, all. Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Bye, everyone.